Okay, so once again, welcome everyone. We are having a special call with Scott Mandelker. We're so pleased that he's agreed to join us and Scott's made himself available to speak on. Basically, he said he was willing to, you know, answer our questions about whatever, whatever is alive for us and what, whatever we're interested in and about a week ago, excuse me. I was contemplating that question. And in meditation and I came up with the idea of, I was thinking about where we are in our study of the law of one in this round through. We just last night finished reading through session 10. And we've gotten a bit of a mix of the, the deep, direct telling of what the law of one is. And, and we've heard from Ra that that's their primary mission is to, is to share the spiritual philosophy of the law of one. And we've also dipped into the, the deep end of the UFO issue and you know, the, the big foot issue and all these sort of somewhat transient from Ross perspective, somewhat transient topics. And that's going to continue as we move through the material. So I was sitting with all that and be like, what would be helpful to hear from Scott where we're at now? And I was thinking about the application of this, of this material. How do we apply it? And so I was thinking about the, the theme of spiritual praxis or living the positive path. And these are some questions that I wrote down and I sent these to Scott. What are the most central practices that Ra offers for spiritual seekers? How can we live the law of one most effectively and efficiently? What is, what are some specific examples of how to employ Ra's teachings on healing and balancing? What does it mean to clear blockages in our energy bodies? And how does that relate to shadow work? And then finally, what if anything is the proper place of examining transient material, for example, UFO disclosure, conspiracy theory, negative control systems, corruption, et cetera. So that's what I sent to Scott. Scott said that was fine. He also has, has said he's willing to, you know, feel any questions that are here and fresh for us. So with that, I want to turn it over to you, Scott. Thank you so much for being here.
Okay. I don't think I can, I mean, I won't give a monologue on, on all those heavy questions. First, let me just do a little introduction. I, I started. I contacted the raw material in maybe eighty seven. And this was after seven years of very intensive study and practice of Buddhism. Breath meditation, Theravada tradition, Japanese Zen tradition. I had a BA in Buddhist studies already and a bunch of paranormal experience and I never looked to the raw material for practice, rather principles. And so the primary, you know, gift of the raw material, I think, is to clarify essential metaphysical principles of how evolution proceeds and our own development in this dimension. And so there's a difference between contemplation and concentration. And then in terms of meditation, there's visualization and then there's formless, like following your breath, then there's thematic, you know, meditating on your guru or something. My practice, my basis was a formless, just focusing on the breath, just breath meditation mindfulness practice. And that leads, that leads to concentration and a quieter mind in general. It also leads to the breakdown of defense mechanisms and much more honesty or communication between conscious subconscious. You know, the matrix and the potentiator of mind. And so if we talk about practices, it's basically one's own personal application of principles. Like know yourself, accept yourself, become the creator. Or acceptance of self, forgiveness of self and direction of the will. These are principles for contemplation. And then as we contemplate in our own way, we would figure out how to apply them in daily life, you know? The four practices where Ross is talking about number one, the moment contains love. And you know, look around, you see the creator, look in the mirror, see the creator, look at inanimate objects, see the creator. These are, these are direct practices. That, those are real practices that I've done a bit of, and they're great. You know? What does it mean though? Everything, you know, the raw material is an introduction. It seems to me. And that's why I spent, you know, one, two, three hours on every single session in, in the series that I was doing. Because I want to read every word and, and it still needs further unpacking. So you have to know, you know, when you want to know about healing and balance, you have to know about seven chakra theory. When you look at seven chakra theory, you look at blockages and distortions. Know yourself, accept yourself. How does that relate to the seven chakras? I mean, that, you know, I wrote, I did a PDF of healing and balance and a, and a playlist, maybe twenty, twenty talks on healing and balance. To me, that's the, the real heart of the raw material. But in, meaning how we can understand ourselves better for balance and understanding what balance is, which is another matter as well. So the short of it is, I think mainly Ra is not giving practices. May Ra is mainly giving principles for contemplation. And it's not a matter of one, two, three, sit down and follow your breath, which is much more straightforward. And, and you know, breath mindfulness. But how do you apply these principles? What does self-acceptance and self-understanding mean? This kind of thing. Ross talking about, you know, when you find impatience, find the corresponding patience, right? So if I'm angry, what should I do? Stop my motorcycle on the, on the side of the highway and think about the, you know, the opposite polarity quality. Maybe. But you got to figure it out yourself. And so for me, the raw material basically confirmed that I'm a wanderer. Meaning I already had some sense and I had out of body experience and I, I actually did the Monroe Gateway Program at Faber, Virginia in the late eighties also. Met Robert Monroe, had some very heavy experiences there. And those experiences plus the raw material led me to, you know, certainty, certainty enough regarding I'm a wanderer. That was in the late eighties. And then write the PhD and became my book and all that. That's a practice too. It's a principle again for contemplation. If you are a wanderer, actually, it can help a person understand all sorts of bases of problems or dissatisfaction or difficulty we feel in this lifetime. And acknowledging, yes, I think I'm wonder, doesn't of course mean I'm better than anyone else. You know, some people don't want to come to that conclusion. I mean, I have many, not many, but I've had clients over the years. They're glaringly apparently wanderers, but they wonder, maybe I'm wonder, maybe I'm not, I wonder, because they don't want to feel different. Or they don't want to feel superior. Or they think that believing that means they're set apart and you, you know, that's some kind of unloving statement. So if you're a wanderer, I think it's critical to acknowledge that it's really true. For wanderers, it's really important to recognize that's true. And because it influences all aspects of our life experience a lot. And you know, the, the, I often fall back to the, the saying, know yourself, accept yourself, become a creator. Know yourself, accept yourself. So Blu-ray, know yourself, green ray, accept yourself, six ray, become the creator. The key. You know, I've integrated raw material and Buddhism and Advaita Vedanta and some transpersonal psychology. And by that, it's very clear that balance means unblocking lower chakras by way of love and wisdom, so that the energy can go all the way up to six and seven. So that's called contact with intelligent infinity and access to intelligent energy. Buddhism doesn't get into that specificity, but it's actually very, very important. So again, I think that asking for practices from the raw material is not gonna, is, is not that fruitful. They talk about, you know, different types of meditation, visualization or silent meditation. That's where Buddhist practice comes in, silent meditation. If you want visualization, you're commonly doing white, you know, white magic so-called or Western mystical. And Don was into that a bit and Carla and Jim, I was never into that. And so and the people who I work with commonly have a similar view that the tarot material is very interesting, but it's not quite where we're coming from. So anyway, the short of it is, I can't really say, here's the practice that Ross says, aside from those four, which are very important. Actually, they can be, you don't need much more than that. Actually, the moment contains love is the way to find the corresponding patients. The moment contains love is the way to get out of the anger. But you got to know how you do it yourself. Because the way you do it is not the way anyone else does it actually. And so you got to be careful listening to people telling you how to do your own evolution. You have to do it your own way. Everyone walks the path alone together, like that. But Ra's description of the seven chakras as they relate to progressively expanded states of consciousness, nowhere else to be found. Hindu yoga theory talks about it nicely with a whole lot of cultural baggage. Buddhism couldn't care less generally other than esoteric Buddhism, they couldn't care less about the chakras. Right? The first seven cards of the Tarot, tremendous teaching on, you know, the development of mind complex, healing and initiation of mind. You don't have to worry about body and spirit. First work on the mind, get yourself to the significator and everything else comes naturally. So and Ra's cosmology, principles of seven dimensional structure, extremely important. It explains cosmology and Buddhism and Hinduism that they, that is in much agreement. And then you get a picture of what the hell is going on here, right? Yeah, there really are multiple dimensions. And everybody's holding a different part of the elephant. So Christianity, they have some true teaching, Islam has some true teaching, Buddhism, Hinduism, Judaism, everybody, Native American or indigenous traditions. They all got elements of it. But not all paths go all the way to the summit of the mountain. That's another thing. There are lots of paths up the mountain, but they don't all lead to the summit. But that's okay, because actually we're not all gunning for the summit in his lifetime. So again, my practice really was breath practice, some mantra, some walking meditation. Using the pyramid, I've used the pyramid for decades, actually. There's a great provider of correctly proportioned kind of tubular pyramids, a guy named Fred Bell. Pyrodine, P Y R A D Y N A, Fred Bell, Pyrodine. I've had the pyramids for years. You don't need to put it on your head, but you can put it under your bed, just like Ross said. I've done that for years. Kept me alive, actually. So tremendous explanatory power that, that for me was able to integrate multiple traditions or helped me integrate multiple traditions, including psychology. Which is critical, right? We don't want to do spiritual bypass. So you know, the practice that Ra offers is personal contemplation of the principles they're presenting. And the principles they present are commonly in aphorisms, like self is a being of infinite worth. Right? Silence of self at a steady state. It really should be silence of mind at a steady state as necessary for deeper self-understanding. And that's the key, right? If you don't have silence, if one doesn't know a relative silence of mind at a steady state, which is just the same in Buddhism, samadhi and dharana concentration from Hinduism, everybody knows. Then the mind has equanimity. Then you, then, then the self can see the mind. Or the one that we are can see the personality that we're working with. This is very subtle. So you know, the raw material is basically like tools and currency. What you, the rest is up to you, how you want to spend the currency and how you want to use the tools. But it isn't, here's the practice, seven steps to enlightenment, you know, the number one best seller. And so it, it's advanced rightly. And it said that the higher students have less face time with the master, not more, less. The higher the student, the less face time with the master. And what I mean is the more the advanced the seeker, the more they have to seek within for teaching and guidance and confirmation and clarity. And it doesn't come from someone else. The other one gives the principles, depends on the relationship, what it is, but you know, we're increasingly required on the path to do it ourselves. And, and that's what Ra is offering, a, a whole range of principles that I think are without distortion at all. They're introductory. They're all introductory and they need much unpacking, the raw material, much unpacking is required. All of, everything they say needs unpacking. And you know, that's why I spent, you know, two hundred talks on, on a hundred six sessions. And it could, and I'm thinking of doing a whole second pass even because there's such depth there, you know, it, it's, it's a goldmine. But these are principles for contemplation rather than techniques for practice. You practice a technique, you apply a principle by contemplation, different. Anyway, so that's part one of my spiel.
Yep. Yeah, thanks. Can we open it up for any questions or responses from the group?
Speechless, eh?
I could always say. Sorry. I just wanted to say yes to all of that. This is Natalie. Love it. Not a question, just a comment.
A comment?
She was just saying that she agree, she's resonates to what you said.
Good, good.
Oh, I see hands up. Let's do that.
Okay, Sean?
I think Neil has his hand up first if you want to go.
I do not see a hand up with Neil, but I don't see Neil either.
There is.
He does have a hand.
Okay, great. Sorry, you guys. I don't know why I'm not seeing that. Yeah, go ahead, Neil.
My question was the pyramid under the bed. I've been doing that since I read the law of one and just wondering if you do any visualizations to go along with that, or if it's just simply under the bed that melds with your aura or energy.
Well, first of all, that, that, the use of the pyramid is a kind of serious matter because you're getting pure electromagnetic or chronic voltage into the, into the energy fields. And so I don't do any visualization in general because I'm not that visual in terms of my practice. I'm different than that. So what I do is I would, you know, first of all, you have to know, it has the, the, you know, the devil's in the detail, right? You, you put it on the floor. You have to have a slat bed that has some space between the apex and the, the mat where you're resting. The pillow must be directly above the apex of the pyramid. And so the apex point of the pyramid, and you've got to get a properly proportioned pyramid with the apex angle not too, you know, big or small. And so the, the, the head on the pillow above the apex of the pyramid, maybe six inches of space between the two. I wouldn't do that for more than thirty five minutes ever. I've done it. I fell and fallen asleep with that and woken up at two in the morning, very zoned out, very like, like punch drunk on prana. And so it's not a good thing to do that. You will burn out your battery and hurt yourself. So I would recommend twenty minutes. Max twenty, max to thirty or thirty five, but I wouldn't push it. And I just do my own practice, following the breath. That's it. And so I know the pyramid apex, what it's doing, the third spiral. And I would just follow the breath for twenty or thirty five minutes. And that's the end of that. And then I would, I set the alarm. And at the end of the twenty or thirty five minutes, roll over, pull out the pyramid and go on with the rest of the day. So I don't do anything special. You know, you don't, you don't need to think your way to freedom. You actually have to do the right practices and then God power, does it, does it help you? Like in Buddhism, there's a first level attainment called sattva panna, means stream entry. Katama said that, that the person that achieves a stream entry in seven lifetimes or less will finish evolution or nirvana, nibbana, moksha, you know, complete and perfect enlightenment. And that's because a certain process gets going. When you, when there's a certain kind of heart chakra, it's basically activation of four, five, six. And that's the great value of, of formal, of, you know, concentrative meditation. It allows energy, you know, the, the catalyst of energy, Kundalini going from root to crown to more fully go to the crown. You don't need to think about it. And so I don't do any kind of visualization. Some people do, if you find it's good, go right ahead. But you know, freedom means no control or love is the opposite of control. And unfortunately, our minds naturally seek to grasp and control and therefore not quite be comfortable with an uncontrolled flow of creation. And so watching the breath is about surrendering control. And commonly, when people are involved in visualization practice, they're trying to make something happen, which is maybe very noble in terms of world service. Or, you know, visualize light streaming around the globe or something, something, or send energy to somebody or do my own healing, all that's good, you know? But it doesn't lead to a certain kind of freedom, the freedom of mind from its own patterns. Mind has to learn to be free of its own habits. This is very difficult. And so I don't do visualization, but I, but if you do that energy, if you, if you do meditation on the pillow above the pyramid, you can feel, I, I felt it. I mean, I could. I, I did it for years and years and I could lie down feeling a little off and come out feeling bright and clean and cool and great. It really works. But if you do too much of it, you'll hurt yourself. And Ross said that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That was very, very enlightening. Thank you.
Sure. Sean?
Hey Scott. First of all, I wanted to thank you for your assessment of the law of one in terms of practice and principles. I think that really makes a lot of sense. I wanted to get your perspective on. And like you said, I guess everyone has a different approach, but I wanted to hear what you thought about, you know, living, like finding a way to live the law of one and relating it to, you know, living in a world that is kind of fucked up. So like how, like what is, how do you view the role of like, you know, like being a wanderer, wanderer, trying to live law of one? And then like on the news, there are like school shootings every day, like how, like what is how, how do you relate to that? Like, do you? What is, what is your role or the role of someone within that kind of environment?
Well, your question needs a lot of tightening of screws. First of all, when you say living the law of one, we'd first have to talk about, what do you, what do you, what do you even mean, living the law of one? What does this mean? If people can't answer that, what the heck are we doing, right? We're just using a phrase that we don't understand. I can't say to anybody what they should be doing, of course. The problem, of course, is that these atrocious injustices and tragedy, you know, I mean, it's atrocity. Basically, one after another. It's very black. I don't mean skin color, black. I mean, absence of love and, and beauty, black. So how do you live in a world with so much pain and deception and violence and suffering and confusion where what we do won't change them? You can meditate and pray and that has some effect, sure. But human history has been going on this way. You know, there, there's been continuous warfare on earth for the last fifteen thousand years since the, before the end of Atlantis, as far as I can tell. Okay. You, you, the one way to, to face this is to look at cosmology. I mean, I guess you haven't heard my, many of my talks, but for the last couple of years, I've been talking about the, the logos and third density. The law free one, the law of free will, the two paths, the paths of polarity and, you know, how that's making my body spirit complex is the cosmology behind the evil on earth. We're talking about dealing with human evil. Now there's cosmic evil. So you have to first understand why is it that Godhead logos lets this be? If God can let it be, we can let it be. Let it be, doesn't mean like it. I did a talk on love and perfect. Love doesn't mean I like and perfect doesn't mean it's good. Love means I accept. It is. And perfect means it's lawful. It's just metaphysically. So you have to contemplate these issues. You have to contemplate cosmology and logoic philosophy or the, the mindset of the logos that allows evil to go on and on and on. All right. And we chose to be here. So you have to accept, you chose to be here. It's a sacrifice. Absolutely. It's not a vacation. But you know, it's, it's logoic plan to give time and space dimensionality and consciousness and energy to beings who reject love and reject beauty and reject unity and reject their own source. Actually, imagining themselves Godhead. So you know, what does infinity do? Well, explore non-infinity. Or explore the appearance of affinity. Yeah. The all-powerful wishes to experience limitation. And you know, I wrote an article called Human Crisis and Divine Plan. Oh, you know, I've, I covered all this stuff in the last twenty five years. And so, but you know, it takes a lot of effort to look into it. Human crisis and divine plan. The logos, as Ross said, extended the law of free will to third density to veil, to thicken the veil between the conscious and subconscious. The result of that is a negative path. Or beings in third density, you know, working in darkness with a tiny candle, doing real work. Now on to paths. And there's a proliferation of negatively oriented souls in this sector of the galaxy. And it's logoic decision to put them here in this 3D cycle. And it's our decision to be part of it, to be of service to the planet and humanity and accelerate our own evolution to be part of what's going on here and particularly at the end times of the cycle. These are concepts, these are principles. If you apply, if you practice them, you don't practice them, right? If you contemplate them, you can apply them and then slowly, slowly make peace with it. You know, the, the logos lets it ride. I've been talking about this for the last year. It's very upsetting. Absolutely. And you have no idea how evil, how much evil there is on this planet, much more than you imagine. If you, if you knew, you wouldn't, you'd be in a bad mood for a long time. You should look at Mark Dutroux, what's going on? You should look at Mark Dutroux, what's going on in, in like the Jimmy Savile, Jeffrey Epstein, that whole thing, Jeffrey Epstein, Jimmy Savile, Mark Dutroux, this whole thing. It's as black and evil as you can imagine. And so, you know, it's, it, why does the logos let it ride? That's what we have to emotionally make peace with or understand and then, you know, accept, accept and allow our grief and our anger and our pain and our hopelessness and our fear, whatever it is. That's, that's the basis of healing and balance, you know, unconditional acceptance. Which is bringing, bringing lower chakra blockage to the heart. Or opening the heart during the experience of emotional triggering, which is the result of lower chakra blockage. And so you gotta, you gotta, you know, if you find point, if you fine tune it, you'll ask yourself, what really bothers you? So, Mr. Shang, what really bothers you? Put it into, boil it down. I mean, you don't have to do it now, but you should know what really bothers you about humanity. And what, where you think there's a contradiction or something doesn't make sense. Because if you know how it makes sense from the logoic view or contemplate that, it's much easier to face our emotional responses to it all being here.
Yeah, so I'll give you an example of like, the, it's, it's, in a way for me, it's the lack of progress in a way, where like, from, from a collective view, it's like, hey, there are these things that are happening that very obviously seem to me like they're gonna completely wreck society or mankind, or like, I mean, there's so many. And then just the lack of, in some sense, like awareness or progress from a collective level of like, hey, let's get our shit together and address some of these problems. And the lack of any movement towards that is incredibly frustrating for me and wants me to, it, it, it makes me want to disconnect from the world, which is in some way for me, like my defense mechanism of like, I can't deal with this frustration. I'm just not gonna, I'm just gonna ignore it. Cause I can't deal with it.
Well, there's a difference between withdrawing from the world because you feel it's too painful to continue engaging or it's futile, like Jesus said, seeds on rocky soil, you know? If they want to sleep, let. If nobody's seeking what you want to offer, withdrawing from the world to some degree seems very reasonable. But withdrawing to avoid your feelings is a problem. So the, the matter would be face your frustration or allow your frustration. Allow. I mean, the basis of healing is not, I mean, everything having to do with healing and balance is the opposite of control. Control is on one side, healing and balance with love and acceptance on the other. That's it. And so those are the only two choices in terms of how to deal with catalysts. And so the catalyst of human society, the catalyst of your bodily, mental, psychological, emotional reaction. Right? You have personal catalyst, there's the environmental or the collective humanity catalyst. The first matter is to not suppress your process, neither exaggeration nor suppression. Neither deflation nor inflation, neither exaggeration nor minimization. That's the middle path. That's called love. Love is unconditional acceptance, not simply, I like it. But, or I care. But it is, I accept it is. Yes, I have this great frustration. But actually, it's probably more than frustration. So then it's a matter of how honest you want to be with yourself regarding the intensity of your feeling. Because you may find some hatred and loathing also. You may not. You may not have been here very long, but for us old timers, it's a little different. So we've seen them longer than you. You may just be new to this, to this situation here. But look at the man from earth, you'll see. So it's a matter of unconditionally accepting your own process, number one. And then accepting the fact that it's okay for the logos that they continue this way. And if they don't want your help, you better find something better to do with your time. If they don't want you, find meaning and value in other ways. And, you know, you can do something that you really believe in and nearly nobody cares, but some people care a lot and they really love it. And you can do something that's deeply meaningful that nobody knows about, and it doesn't matter because it's meaningful to you. And you can find yourself developing therefrom. So you may have some preconceptions that are mistaken, like you're here to change them. Or this society is just about to start a golden age and everybody's welcome to the party. Well, everybody's welcome to the party, but nearly none of them are going to graduate. That's what Ross said, you know? So you might want to look at some of that and consider if that could be true. And, you know, make sure that you don't have missed, you know, mistaken presumptions in the sense that we're not, you may think that you're here to reform society or build a new world. You may be on the other side of dimensional shift, not now, after dimensional shift. If you're a fourth density wanderer, you're here for the next cycle. You're here to begin the next cycle. Or lay in foundations in consciousness for the next fourth density civilization. Depending on when dimensional shift is and how long you live. So you may have a right sense that you're here to build a new world. But it's on the other side of dimensional shift, not prior. I did a talk in the last six months called Collective Irredeemability. And that's my position, that the collective is irredeemable. There's too much negativity at all levels of the power structure from the top to the bottom, too much dishonesty, too much materialist bias. And so they're gonna crash before they are reborn. Maybe you don't think so, but it seems like that to me. So you gotta have some sense of the, the kind of, the, why may, what, what are the, what are the qualities of the souls in this world? What are their levels of evolution? What is their relative level of evolution? You, you gotta kind of get a sense of where they're at and see them clearly. Then some of the frustration can go away. But it's difficult, of course. So live with frustration. That's what I do. Okay? And the Buddha taught this. He didn't say, you know, look around, see the creator. He said, when there are certain circumstances that are very painful, patient endurance is all you, all you can do. He even taught that to the arhats, those that were finished, you know, creating karma. That you just have to grin and bear it. If patient endurance, there's a lot of conditions that won't change and that's called learning to accept the unacceptable, that kind of thing. Anyway, many hands. Ken, can I, Toto, can I, can I point on the hands?
Yes.
Okay.
Diana and we're both heard of me earlier, no? Okay. Well, I had a very simple question. And it seems very transient now compared to what you've been saying, but you were talking about pyramids earlier. And placing the pyramid under the bed, under your head. I was wondering, can you also use the pyramid under other body parts if you want to accomplish some healing on a certain organ somewhere?
Um, I haven't done it, but I imagine it's possible. But you have to be careful that you're not tonifying illness.
Okay.
In Chinese medicine, there's two principles, two general principles. One is to detox and the other one is tonify. If you, if you tonify before you detox, then you're strengthening, you know, disease process. And so whatever the period, wherever the energy, the third spiral, we're talking about the third spiral energy off the apex. Wherever in the electromagnetic field that that goes, it's going to be intensified. The reason it's under the pillow, under the head is to tonify or strengthen the electromagnetic condition of spirit complex chakras, six and seven, six and seven. So it could definitely do some healing at different parts of the body, I imagine. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't know. And you could have a problem if you do too much of it. You have to try it and use your intuition. It certainly seems possible, but there is, you know, some concern.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Diana?
I used the pyramid, just on this note, every day for years. And I did see a big difference. I also put it under my meditation stool sometimes, and that seemed to really aid my meditations. But in terms of vital energy, yes, under, under my pillow. But a couple of times I actually spent a whole day just dragging, absolutely dragging, feeling like my body was made of lead and I couldn't think clearly and just low, low mood, only to discover later that I had left the pyramid under my bed all night, twice. So it seems to really have an impact and you can really overdo it, yeah. Uh, the question I had for you, Scott, had to do with, so you were talking about, you were talking to Shang about when there's, when he sees all this unacceptable stuff happening, you suggested that he first become aware of what really bugs him, right? Step one, know yourself. And I seem to have the opposite problem, which is that there's not a lot of negative emotion running close to the surface. My primary negative emotion, negative meaning, you know, just uncomfortable, would be sadness. Um, I, I don't tend to experience anger occasionally in dreams. And I am constantly asking myself, okay, is this equanimity or is this a total suppression of my feelings? And I've had some clues as to the fact that, that, yeah, there's more in there to feel. A lot of it is grief, but it's there for you and it's your guidance system. And if you can't access it, you are in denial of your needs and missing out on opportunities to really show up in the world and advocate for yourself. So I'm wondering if you have any suggestions about practices that you feel are consonant with Ross teachings, although they don't give too much information there, that would allow a person to know themselves, to really get in touch with what's going on inside, either in the moment or at the end of the day. Uh, anything that works for you?
Well, again, your, your, your assumption, I don't know, might want, you might want to articulate or get unpack or delineate the, the assumption. You're thinking that there's all this hidden process in the deep mind and you want to liberate it to have a more fulfilling life? Or something like that?
It's more my emotional body, my triggers, something really terrible can happen. Not like a terrible injustice necessarily, but just something that would, most people would consider extraordinarily stressful in my day. And I can be like, eh, okay, that sucks. Let's see what we can do about it. And then later I'm like, am I traumatized? Or am I well-adjusted? And I don't, I sometimes don't feel like I can tell the difference. But I do notice in myself a propensity to, well, I'm not, I think I'm not always aware of my needs. And I think I can engage in relationship or experience that I will find generally unsatisfying or unfulfilling. And then later say, why did I do that? Why did I say yes to that? Well, nothing in my being or in my emotional being was indicating to me, no, you don't like this. You don't want this. What are you doing? Um, and then I think to myself, were there clues available? Was there a self-awareness that would have given me an option to make a different choice? And I just feel out of touch with that sometimes. It's like life is falling in my lap and I'm not creating it based on what I want because I don't know, because my feelings aren't there a lot of the time.
So you're saying you don't really know what you want? I mean, I think you, you need to, yeah, I mean, there are two different things there. One is it sounds like you can go with the flow and be unaware that you don't like what's happening. Only later discover that you didn't like what you got involved in. Yes?
That sounds right. Or I can just sort of grin and bear it, like, maybe it, it's, it doesn't register in my being as some aversive activity, but more that like, this is happening. I'll do this.
You, you have to know when that's the case. I mean, it's not like you have to have a strong emotional process all the time. Right? If, if, there may be a whole lot of things that most people around you get upset by that don't upset you. Then you have to know yourself enough to know, I can, I can handle that. That wasn't such a big deal for me. And it is a kind of big deal to them and I'm not suppressing anything. I'm here. I don't, I'm really open, but I don't feel it's a terrible thing, so I don't feel upset and all they do. And that doesn't mean I'm out of touch with myself. But then there's other times where you're saying, you look back at something you got involved in and you sort of regret that you were part of that. Sounds like at the time you were out of touch with your own emotional process. And that's a matter of, I don't, am I afraid to say no? And do I not want to hurt anyone? Do I not want anyone to dislike me? Do I not want to think that I'm a bad person because they dislike me because I do something that they didn't want or me to do? Or I left when I didn't want to leave and that hurts them, then I feel I'm bad. And oh, I always think I'm bad. My mother told me I'm bad. And so it reconfirms I'm really bad. So I want to make them happy, so I don't feel bad, because I already feel bad, like that, right?
Yeah.
Right? Right. So that's not a matter of, you know, being phlegmatic or you're more mellow than other people sometimes. That's true. You're more mellow than some people or many people sometimes. That's great. But then some part of it is you go along to get along because, you know, your love over wisdom. This is called love over wisdom. And the wisdom is, let me see what's going on here. Then the love says, yes, yes, I love you. Yes, 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 I love you. It's all good. Yes, yes, yes. Which is a real problem, actually, in this world. So you have to know the fine distinction between being more balanced and peaceful than other people in certain situations where it just doesn't bother you and suppressing your discontent because you're afraid of other people being upset with you or hurting them.
Okay. Well, thanks for that.
Does that resonate?
Some of it definitely does. I mean, I was laughing at myself because I went to the farmer's market the other day and I, I bought thirty-five dollars worth of stuff I didn't want after I listened to farmers talk about their pride in their products. And I hugged two people I didn't want to hug.
Okay, so, so that, that, that's love over wisdom. That means you need to up your wisdom. Which normally means you have to go through some things you're afraid of.
Yeah, see, I didn't realize in the moment that like, geez, Diana, why are you doing this? Don't buy this. Why are you hugging this person? You have no natural inclination to hug this person. But hey, oh, nice to see you. And then it does feel disingenuous. But in the moment, there just wasn't like a feeling state guiding that. And afterwards I was able to look at it and be like, that didn't feel so great. Why can't I do it in the moment?
That's because, that's called dissociative process.
Yeah, okay, I can get on board with that.
Yeah, it's not psychotic dissociative process. It's a moment of dissociating from the emotional process in play. It, it's being out of touch, being in your head, being spacey, being high and forgetting the low. And the low is your visceral bodily process.
Yeah.
And if you're in touch with your visceral bodily process, you don't hug someone you don't want to hug. You don't even let them touch you, or you don't like them to touch you. If you don't want them to touch you, you feel bad when they reach out and touch you.
Yeah.
Right? So, so then it's getting through, you know, why, why am I so afraid to feel those things or why don't I feel that? And then you can pray. I want to feel freely, you know, before you go to bed at night, you just pray higher self or whatever. Please help me feel more fully or naturally or honestly, you know? Please help me heal more deeply. Please help me be in touch with myself more fully. And then it'll happen. And then you become, you'll have a real up and down thing. So you may find that in your, you know, in your family, it was So you may find that in your, you know, in your family, it was disallowed to go against the, the family tradition or the family way, family culture. So you, you know, have that natural kind of people pleasing kind of thing. That may be the case.
Historically, I think it has been. I'm trying to outgrow it. I think I've made a lot of strides, but yeah, so I think what you're saying is just setting the intention and asking for help. To know.
You'd also have to be accepted. You, you can be angry sometimes too.
If I knew how.
You don't have to learn how, you have to want to be deeply honest with yourself.
Okay.
You have, you have to want, I mean, you might want to try to get a massage, professional massage too. There may be some musculature blockage um, associated with lower body that keeps you in the higher, in the upper.
That's very interesting. Yeah, I have a congenital hip deformity and a lot of pain and like the psoas and all of the muscles around the pelvic girdle, so it's, yeah.
Yeah, and that, that whole zone is a second, third chakra, fifth subplane, two point five, three point five. So I did a whole series of talks on understanding the arms and legs in terms of seven chakra theory.
Whoa, alright, I'm gonna try to find that. Okay, I don't want to monopolize. Um, thank you. What kind of massage? And then I'm done.
Um, you know, I mean, it, more important is who, somebody you like and trust.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, thank you.
It's, it's about willing to feel more fully, knowing that what you might be feeling, you don't want to feel. And you don't like it. You might start, you might feel hatred. So then you feel hatred. And then, you know, accept that, okay. So it, it's know yourself, accept yourself as always.
Right, good stuff, thank you.
Okay.
Diana and Natalie put a comment in the chat for you as well.
Right, right, right. Yeah, homeopathy is wonderful, if you get the right stuff.
So Scott, you, um, professionally, you, you counsel people, is that right?
Yeah, 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 I've been, I, yeah, I've been doing counseling for thirty years.
And do you work with kind of, uh, folks who are just coming from anywhere or is it mostly folks who are metaphysically, you know, prac- practicing, uh, you know, either they're aware of the law of one or coming from that perspective or?
Yeah, I, um, I have a master's in counseling, uh, PhD in East West psychology, but no license. I'm not a licensed MFCC or therapist or psychologist or any of those titles. Most people find me from my talks or my books. And so then they are metaphysically inclined and most of them are wanderers, actually. But some people are not and find me some other way and we don't talk about metaphysical things and that's fine too.
And do you, um, I'm kind of just, I'm inferring from, uh, just from our talk today that maybe one of the big roles that you play in their process is to help them do that work of finding out what's true for them. Do you, do you just help guide people to, to kind of like naturally unblock what they're not able to see on their own? Or can you describe how you work with folks?
Well, um, you know, I, I, I first try to understand the mind of the person. Is this a wander or not? Uh, talking about four, five, six, or not. Um, have they been on earth a long time or not? Um, and then what are the issues that they're, they're requesting help on? Uh, in general, I want people to find their deeper truths. What's true and important for them. True and important and relevant, uh, as defined by them. So, uh, I wouldn't tell people what to do, but I certainly would point out, well, if you want that, you shouldn't go that way. Or if you go the other way, you won't get that, you'll get something else. So it's very much, um, self-empowerment. Trust yourself, but be careful of your mind. So unconditional self-regard with, um, healthy discernment regarding one's own distortions and unhelpful patterns. So. But yeah, it's very much about helping people, uh, get answers to their questions and come back more fully to themselves. Because I mean, you know, what we seek i- is, is really our potential, the manifestation of our potential. What you seek is what you are, like that. And so, uh, teachings help us return to ourselves. And, you know, I don't want anyone, I don't, I don't want to lead anyone anywhere, but I, it's great if you can lead yourself well. Then, you know, you're a bright light in the world like that. So that approach, I had an interesting thing and just as a cute anecdote. Um, when I was at the Counseling Center, uh, CIIS, California Institute of Integral Studies, San Francisco. I graduated in ninety-one or ninety-two PhD, started with eighty-seven MA. And at the Counseling Center, the Intern Center, where we're getting licensed hours to sit for the California License, for example. Uh, one day, the directors of the center took me aside and they said to me, your clients seem to be happy with you, but your supervisors don't know what you're doing. So if you want to continue at this Counseling Center, you have to go back into your own therapy to learn the right way of doing therapy and talking about therapy, or you cannot stay at this Counseling Center. And so, of course, I left. And so that's because, you know, I care about, um, people helping themselves and, and getting getting the help they need from themselves, really. Me as a catalyst, not how I talk about it. Not, you know, object relations and approved theories or language. So my approach would not be, not be compatible with any licensed, you know, regulatory system. Um, which is fine for me. And that was at my first Saturn return. So Saturn returns are very real. And, um, one should know about that too.
Yeah.
So counseling is very, very satisfying. I'm sure you could do counseling if you wanted, Aaron. So it's very sad, you just don't, just don't call yourself a therapist or a psychologist or something, something. You can say I'm a spiritual counselor and the agencies will leave you alone because they think you're a quack. But people who appreciate you will come to you and appreciate you and you'll help them.
Are you familiar with Byron Katie and the work, the process called the work?
Uh, not so much, a little.
Yeah. That's, um.
Yeah, there are many systems, you know?
Yeah.
Is there something about her system that you found very helpful?
Yeah, well, uh, BJ is actually the, the, our resident kind of, um, uh, expert or practitioner of that, 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 but the two of us, BJ and I both have studied with Byron Katie and, um, it just resonates with, uh, with your perspective that you're sharing. It's really about, um, the self guiding the self into, into freedom. And to facilitate that process is simply to, uh, hold space for that person and really guide them into their own truth. And that's, that's why it comes up for me.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, totally.
Well.
So. So then, then you guys have had a long discussion about, and, and Sean brought it up a little. You know, the environment, the collective, uh, society around us and what's going on. From session ten, you can see, um, you know, what the deep state or, uh, in, you know, secret government and all of that kind of stuff is all about. That's very real and that's, um, developing strongly here in the end times. Uh, I think again, it comes back to the individual and balance. Um, for some people, it's very valuable to do an extensive study of worldly ways and negativity. Uh, some people get stuck in it and never come out.
Can you speak to why? It, it, it is, you think it is valuable for some people to go through that?
Oh, it's, it's, uh, the, first of all, it's what Ra calls the negative use of wisdom. Okay, that means how negatively oriented entities use fifth ray. They're using fifth ray, you know, without Blu-ray, without green ray. They go around from big blockage of one, two, three, four to kind of launch from five, six, seven. That's how they make contact with intelligent infinity and harvest to forty negative. So, uh, to study the ways of, the negative way, use of wisdom is the ways of bellicosity. If you do a search for the word bellicosity, you'll see it in the law of one. Um, it's advanced wisdom. Uh, love over wisdom can't do it. It helps to get through fear. Because, I mean, it helps, um, to grow up. You know, the, in love without wisdom is a big problem, or love without corresponding wisdom is a big problem. Because green ray does not, does not access six chakra in the same way that Blu-ray does. When Blu-ray is active, meaning the person has discernment, the person sees truth, sees reality clearly, they don't need to think about it, or at least some things they don't need to think, they just see and they know. This is Blu-ray, as far as I can tell. That act, that, that is associated with intelligent energy or six chakra in a way that loving is not. And so if the person is too much love over wisdom, they end up weak. Because they're not accessing the higher self adequately. Only in an imbalanced way of, of the positive. Then, you know, it doesn't mean become negative, but uh, for a greater development of, of Blu-ray wisdom, the study of negativity is very useful. Because that's all they have. They have no love. So all they have is negative, was, negative wisdom. I've benefited tremendously from that myself and I'm, you know, it, it's inevitable that we get caught in what helps us. What helps us, helps us go beyond where we are to some greater development. Inevitably, that becomes an attachment. And then we get somewhat stuck in what's helped us and then we kind of get stuck at a certain level of greater development. Until certain things happen and we see there's something better or greater or more deep and we move on beyond that. So commonly, people have phases of, of deeper and more withdrawn engagement with human society. Meaning looking at the newspaper or, you know, I guess it's not, it's online, right? Reading about the ways of politics, geopolitics and geo finance and military and strategy and diplomacy and all this crap in history. If you're interested in it, you should go for it, right? Meanwhile, um, people can get world weary and discouraged and depressed and unhappy if one is too far, i- if one is too fully engaged or immersed in it. You can get, you can, you, you can kind of drown in it. And that's a problem. So that's why meditation is useful. And putting aside regularly, um, concern with the human collective. In my view. But I think it's essential for development of wisdom. And there, there are a hell of a lot of people that don't, you know, I mean, there, there are Buddhist communities that are still wearing masks. Look at the people around the Dalai Lama, he's still wearing a mask, the people around him. What's up with that? Were they afraid coronavirus is flying around forever? They don't know what they're doing. Well, they don't know what they're doing. They're monks, right? They don't know what they're doing. That's crazy. Well, that's because they don't talk about the worldly enough. They follow. Surprising. So wisdom is a whole nother matter than love. It's completely different because it accesses spirit complex. So body, mind, spirit, for lower triad is associated with body, four and five, mind, six and seven, spirit. So one, 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 right? The three spheres, the three, the law of free will, the law of love, the law of light. So it's the prin- principle of Trinity. But wisdom, wisdom saves. Um, love actually doesn't. Because love without wisdom, right? You see, with sufficient love, you'd move into wisdom naturally. Because love really means fearlessness and no control. So if you're really seeking to be fearless and seeking to drop controlling, you will have to face bitter truths and then try to comprehend what's going on here. Shang?
Actually, I think Diana had her hand up first.
Oh, okay, Diana?
I heard you say that wisdom happens naturally once you've moved into love. Is that what you said?
What, yeah, it, it, it so long as you don't get blocked, so long as you don't make a home in love over wisdom, love moves into wisdom. Meaning there are a lot of people that don't, you know, the three monkeys, right? See no evil, hear no evil, speak no evil.
Right.
And they think that that's spiritual. You know, don't say bad things about people or don't, don't say that, that's a judgment. That's unloving. Oh, really? So uh, that's, I think, mistaken. Without blockage or getting stuck in trying to keep a good feeling of green ray, the green ray development naturally goes to wisdom. If you really open without control, you'll feel whatever you feel. And then you will realize you don't know what's happening. And then you'll realize you want to know. You want to get out of your pain. I'm in pain. Yes, it's true. I don't want to be here. Fine. I want to get out. Fine. How do I do it? Well, I first better understand what the hell's going on with me right now. How did I get here? What's happening and how could get out? That's called wisdom. So to, to the development of those higher understandings of process that comes from unconditional accepting or opening, non-controlling leads right into wisdom.
Okay. So I'm here, I'm my thought on wisdom is that it's, it's, it's a faculty that you develop eventually, that if you are an open, relatively open-hearted person, allows you to use to shine your love efficaciously. Like there's love without wisdom, which is full of acceptance of everything, but not necessarily maximally helpful compared to wisdom in, informed by love, right? So for, when I hear you say, the question that I have is this. I, I heard you say that you need to get into wisdom up into the fifth chakra in order to be able to contact your, I don't know if you said spirit, use, utilize your spirit shuttle or contact.
Yeah, no, what I said is fifth chakra has a certain access to six chakra intelligent energy.
Okay.
The fourth ray activation does not have.
So you're saying it's like a flavor, a quality of access that fourth does not have?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, because of the relationship between blue, blue, blue. You know, there are two aspects of mind. There's the mind facing up and there's a mind facing down.
Yeah.
The mind facing up is called Blu-ray and the mind facing down is called green ray. The two, the green, the blue-green center, Ra let, let that slip at one point. The blue-green center means fourth and fifth chakra is one chakra.
Sure, uh, sure.
And so, so, so what I'm just saying is uh, wisdom, uh, true development, truly seeking wisdom and, and knowing reality, knowing deep truths, whatever. Uh, access is power, quote, power, meaning six chakra energy. In a way that green ray does not. Ra said that Blu-ray is the first chakra that's outgoing as well as incoming. When you shine your love and radiate love light or something, there's some issues with that.
It's more of an acceptance thing than it is a, an outgoing type of energy.
Yeah.
Uh, but I haven't, sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's a long, it's a subtle discussion.
Okay, so thank you. And the question, I think we needed to kind of, I, I needed to get on the same page with you. But the question that I was leading up to, if I could, is you're, you're saying that wisdom is important. Ra is saying we are in third density and, and this is the density where we polarize our consciousness and make the choice. Love is what matters. Wisdom is like in advanced, when we're in fourth, fully in fourth, we're working on our fifth chakra, right? So right now we're in third, working on our fourth, but then we have wanderers and we have people who came here to affect certain balances between love and wisdom. Whereas others are still trying to open the green ray. When you say to the world, wisdom is where it's at, um, I ask you, do you feel that that's true for everyone? Or do you feel that the focus on opening the heart is really the most important thing right now?
Each person has to, you know, go to what they, has to be clear on what's truly most important to them.
Okay.
Okay? I would never say that somebody who wants to walk in love or develop love for green ray. I would never say that somebody who wants to walk in love or develop love for green ray should not. Or should go higher to wisdom. Uh, no. It's just that imbalance is a problem. And so it's also, you know, it's, it's a little bit, there, there is a contradiction in the raw material. Ross teaching is specifically for 3D evolution, given to three wanderers called Don, Jim, Carla. Okay? What, what those wanderers need is not exactly the same as what 3D evolution is all about. Thus, the discussion of balancing love and wisdom, and disciplined personality, and higher self, and contact with intelligence infinity, that's not a third density work normally.
Yeah.
To think that I'm in their density, therefore I have to just develop love, and I can't trust anything else, or that's all. This, this is um, self restriction. The prob, real problem is that wisdom is difficult. Because I can say this is true, and somebody else that you respect says, no, that's not, and says something else that he thinks is true. How do you know? How do you know who's a liar? How do you know what's true? That's the great challenge of wisdom. That's why, you know, wisdom is a rather lonely matter, Ross said. And so you need a lot of time alone to get clear. Like, like for me, I've had a lot of time trying to make peace with how the logo supports all this disgusting activity on planet Earth. I wouldn't do it, but, you know, okay. Because if you really open your eyes, you'll see a lot of stuff. So I would never say, you know, one should um, focus on wisdom, not on love or something. No, of course not. It's just there's certain deficiencies in understanding. When you're wishing to stay only in love. If you're wishing to stay only in what you understand love to be, you may block other development. It's like we talked about, you know, you're saying, you, 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 you don't know when you feel used or anger, you know, angry at being used. If somebody wants a hug and you don't want to hug, you should say no, right? But if you say yes, where, where's the wisdom of how you're really feeling there and, and why you regret later? That's a function of wisdom too.
Yeah.
Just your feeling in the moment.
Thank you. I could ask a million questions, but I'm gonna let other people talk. Thank you.
Okay. Shang?
Um, I wanted to follow up on what you said earlier about uh, the that it might be fruitful to understand negative wisdom. Um, and I wanted, like, what is the goal of understanding negative wisdom for someone who, let's say, like, you're, you want to be on the positive path? Is the, the intent of studying the negative side of wisdom to basically be able to see things better for what they are? And, you know, still be able to accept it? Is that the end, like, what?
You mean, why do people say that it's important to seek wisdom or study the negative use of wisdom?
Yes, negative, specifically the negative, like, what is, what is the, uh, like, how do you, what's the goal of this program, basically?
Which program?
The, 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 if, if you were, if I were to go on a program of studying negative wisdom. Um, what, what, what am I trying to get out of it?
Uh, it, it doesn't, I don't think things work like that, or I don't, I don't work like that. People should do what they think. If you don't think it's important, you probably shouldn't do it. But for me, um, I want to that are organizing this society. I want to know the way this society is organized in terms of consciousness and morality. I want to understand why human history is the way it is. And um, you know, for the Confederation, because they, Yahweh and Ra didn't have a great grasp on negativity, they did all sorts of things uh, that we could call as a grievous error, but not a mistake. So Tesla came in, and now that technology is used for psychotronic mind control. And Yahweh came in and did genetic modification to counter Orion thirty-five hundred years ago. And now we have the Illuminati based on Egyptian symbology doing black magic. And, and uh, using occult power that also started around that time, thirty-five hundred years ago. With the hybridization and what they provided. So uh, looks like a mistake to me. If you don't do it twice, it's probably because you, there's some value, you don't need it anymore. The Confederation has been woefully ignorant of negativity, in my view, completely naive, very bad. And, you know, we have reports to file. So in general, um, you, you know, some souls don't feel a need for it. If you don't, then don't. Some souls do feel a need for it, because they want a certain development of the intellect. Uh, a certain seeing of quality. Seeing qualities of consciousness. If you don't know negative, you know, operations. You'll have a hard time with people who want to fool you and trick you and use you. Which maybe you haven't met in your life, but you will as you keep evolving. And so it, it's just, you know, knowing the creator. The creator is the basis of this system. And you've got some pretty hardcore negativity. For me, that's kind of interesting and strange and upsetting, and I'd like to understand it. What's your sense of it?
Um. Yeah, I, 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 I agree with you. I think it's like, at least my personal opinion is that it helps to be more informed, like live a more informed life, to be informed about the ways of society and how to fit within it in a way. Uh, it's to be effective, even like on the positive path, if you're living in a, we're living in a mixed society. So to be effective, it's important to, to see.
Well, yeah, if you, if you work in a company, if you're with any group of people. You better know some negative, the ways of negativity, because they're gonna be operating all around you. Some people are very nice, and they're good, and it's fun, and it's happy, but the boss, and the boss's boss, and why, why they're telling you to do what you're being told to do. Hmm, may have something to do with service to self. The operation um, of, of the company uh, may have some negative patterns of hierarchical control-based organization. If you don't know what's going on with that, you'll feel bad and you won't know why. And actually, this is another reason why it's useful to study negativity. Because we're in more suffering than we admit to. We're in more pain or discontent than we admit to. We are not that honest with ourselves, actually. Meaning, why do you think healing is the first step in the after-death process? Because everybody dies with wounding. Healing, life review, and preparation for the next incarnation, if you remember Ross teaching. It's perfect. The, the next movie is called Astral City, Nos Solar. Aaron, you know that movie? Yeah, right on. Great movie. Right, so the reason that healing comes first after death, for those who don't get caught in hungry ghosts or hell. Is because we all die with all sorts of emotional wounding on heal. Because we haven't done it during the life, because we didn't want to face it, because we're not honest at some level. Or, you know, we just look in another direction. But uh, to study the ways of negativity, it actually helps us understand how we avoid healing our pain. Ow. Because uh, we do some kind of avoidance and manipulation on our own subconscious, on our own elements of our own process. In a similar way as negatives control others to structure society. We do a job on ourselves to some degree, similar to what negatives do to earth humanity as a whole. So to know what they do to each other, we can have a better view of how we're not quite honest with ourselves. Or we have, we, we, we have pain, we don't want to admit. And it doesn't mean you should be sitting in pain all the time. But, you know, it's good to feel pain when pain comes up, meaning grief and sorrow and crying and, you know, real discouragement and hurt. It's very, very helpful. Because we all have a lot of sadness, right? The, the brothers and sisters of sorrow, right? Who's sorrow? Humanity's sorrow is our sorrow. So, Aaron, anyway, is that, is that clear?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to contribute a little bit to my, from my perspective, why, with the role of studying negativity and negative wisdom. You know, it's, it's like Earth's third density is um, is going to produce a harvest um, in, in terms of like the collective mind of Earth. And in fourth density, our work is going to be healing that as a planet. We have to, we're going to have to heal everything that happened. And in a way, it's like, to me, it feels like to go ahead and, and get into the real dark like history and the, the, the reality of what's been happening and what still is happening here. Um, if we can do it with an open heart, if we can do it without, you know, cultivating hatred or resistance to it. It feels to me like it begins the work of healing it, even if we can't actually change it now and transform it now, because we, you know, doesn't seem likely.
Actually, you bringing love, wisdom, green, blue to the world's pain and the negativity is healing. It's spiritual healing. So you're doing world healing, world service, when you simply make peace with the reality here. In many ways, we are transmi, we, we, we receive and transmit. What comes in is catalyst, what comes out is a seven chakra output. And to the degree that we are in balance, which really means love and wisdom balance, real balance is love, wisdom. There are other, you know, there are other elements to it, but you're sort of taking in the black and putting out the white. You, you're, this is a Tonglen, this is the Buddhist practice in Tibet called Tonglen. They breathe in the black and breathe out the white. That's true. Yeah, we're filters at some level. Yeah. And so the filter needs to keep itself clean and make sure that we clean out the gunk regularly. It, it's a good thing to know humanity well. You know, i- if you know, if you know the history of modern medicine, you will know how Rockefeller, you know, called holistic medicine alternative, and the Flexner Report, and naturopaths got kicked out in nineteen twenty. Oh. So, I mean, I didn't know that. I'm learning this stuff too. And so what you see with, you know, studying the negative use of wisdom, or which is a lot of deception. Is how amazingly profoundly we've been lied to. That's useful, because we feel it. You know, if humanity's leadership on Earth is pretty much negative, all negative, we feel that. That affects the nature of society in every way for at all levels. We feel it. And so why am I feeling this way? How am I feeling? I'm feeling hopeless. I'm feeling trapped. I'm feeling anger. I'm feeling sad. I'm feeling afraid. Some part of it is a reaction to the moral consciousness quality of earth humanity. We are open systems. The, the body, mind, spirit complex is an open system to creation. That's what the law of one means. It's all one. Like waves on the ocean, every wave interpenetrates or is affecting every other wave. Right, we're like livers, right? And so we're like, uh, you know, logoic detox agents. Nothing like that. So, so we shouldn't minimize how difficult it is here. That's another purpose. When I, when I watch the movie Gangs of New York, disgusting movie. Scorsese, eh, not, not my favorite. And I could see, ah, this was like the history of Manhattan, New York City, in early nineteenth century or something. I could see, ah, that's why I felt so bad in New York City, because the whole city was born on gang violence, bloodshed, and political corruption two hundred years ago. Ah, so that's what's going on here that I'm reacting to, that I'm feeling. We're feeling many, many things we're not aware of. So we feel the collective. But if we don't understand the collective, we won't deeply understand our feelings. Now, we already can talk about it, so we know a bit already. And then it's fielder's choice, up to you. You, you look into it as much as you want. I've learned tremendously from alternative news. Um, meanwhile, sometimes I drop it and don't look in. Like that. You know, spirituality doesn't, doesn't mean always feeling good. Spiritual development doesn't mean always feeling good. I mean, how do you love and accept atrocity? It's not easy, but, but love doesn't mean like. And it's complete and whole and perfect, doesn't mean it's good. Or it's good with a capital G. But if you really want to make peace with it, you gotta get to the logoic, go closer to higher self. And get that perspective. Anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Um, I wonder if you'd be willing to talk, just kind of riff on what, what is a blockage in, in a chakra? What is a blockage in our energy bodies? I think that'd be helpful to.
Well, you know, the, the, the main work, you know, Ra talks, Ra said, the, the the purpose of third density is to learn the ways of love. That means activation of green ray. Which obviously won't go deep unless we activate Blu-ray wisdom too, and all of that. So it's not only green ray. But that green reactivation or learning the ways of love equals unblocking lower triad. Lower triad means red, orange, or red, red, orange, yellow, first three chakras. And you, it's very useful to understand those first three chakras. Uh, the first is very much about body, and actually, it's pre-conscious. Uh, unblocking root chakra is a long discussion, because in some ways, I think it's not really done by thought. Thinking through my process, it's an energetic rebalancing that comes after the healing and initiation of mind, actually, if you know the order. So the work on body comes after mind, and it's a lot more than, you know, eat right and sleep enough, and don't get too much of this and too little of that. It's much deeper than that. So first chakra is not fully worked on, in my understanding. There, there's some of it, but it's a little more subtle. The main working is two, three, four, five, six. The, these are the five chakras of consciousness, of self-consciousness, two, three, four, five, six. And the main work is two and three. And any lower blockage like two will affect three and everybody else up online. So second chakra is about feelings and the sense of the personal self, the embodied personal self, how I feel about my personal self in this world. And three is about relations with other. Ross said, there's an interesting quote. Looking on the loveone.info page, favorite quotes. Uh, down the page, let's see if I can find it, just so you know what the standard really is. Rock talked about how to open yellow ray. One oh two point eleven. Ross said, each entity must, in order to completely unblock yellow ray, love all which are in relationship to it. What is love? With hope only of the other selves' joy, peace, and comfort. Now, that's the active portion of love. Kindness, caring, giving, supporting, being present, helping, healing. There's the other aspect of love, which is just unconditional opening. And that's actually preparatory to really kindly caring. So, your question?
Just quickly, do you think that they were referring to unblocking yellow ray in a positive sense? Because there's a positive and negative use of different rays.
The yellow ray is not unblocked on the negative path. The first four chakras become a coiled spring on the negative path. No, no, no. Crystallization is of, is of higher chakras. The lower chakras are not crystallized. They're just maximally unblocked. Meaning you don't continue, there, there's the development of green, blue, indigo. In general, the work is to develop green and blue imbalance. And then they become crystallized. That's the crystallized healer. Is the person who's working mainly from six chakra with a pretty much kind of quasi-completed development in balance of love, wisdom, form. kind of quasi-completed development in balance of love, wisdom, four and five. The thing about energy block, does that, does that make sense?
Sometimes my memory feels really good and other times I feel like I forgot everything that I learned. So right now I'm struggling with crystallization of lower triad, but I'm, yeah, the rest.
You can do a search on the word crystallization or crystal and see what Ra has to say. But as far as I understand, the crystallization is of the higher triad or four and five particularly, not one, two, three. Um, and Ross said that, you know, no matter how much work we do on lower chakra blockage, some energy must be kept or maintain or held by the lower chakras for maintenance. And that maintenance actually means the viability of the physical body, meaning you can't keep a physical body unless there's some energy trapped or blocked or held in one, two, three. And, and actually that's why even great teachers can be angry or feel grief. They, there, there's no, there's no selfishness in it, but they could feel anger and grief. You see it all the time. I mean, real teachers, not fakes who also do that. But real teachers can feel grief and, and, uh, some righteous indignation.
We're distorted into existence.
Well, existence is a distortion. The, the love one is the first distortion, or the love free will is the first distortion. The love free will, that there is a creation is in a sense a distortion. Right? The concept of light. The illusion of limits. It's, it's an illusory situation in some way. But anyway, the lower tri- you know, healers talk about clearing chakras. But by meditation and self-knowing and self-accepting and self-forgiveness and forgiveness of other and opening the heart and developing virtue, we clear lower tri- lower chakras. Particularly second chakra being, um, I've made friends with myself. My mind is a pleasant place. I'm not in self-conflict. I don't cut undercut myself. This is very rare in this world. Actually, most people, including spiritually oriented people, are to some degree self hard on themselves, too, too self-blaming or in self-conflict. Self-conflict is a killer. And actually, that's, that's second chakra. So, uh, that's the big problem. And then to whatever degree we have inner conflict, I hate myself for this. I don't want to see that. I wish I was. I wish I wasn't. I'm stuck in self-blame. I have all this guilt and shame and regret and remorse. You know, not moving into forgiveness. To the extent that that remains, then our relationships with others are distorted or have some imbalance and some problem. And that's because second chakra blockage leads to third chakra blockage. And so unblocking the lower two by way of the upper three. We unblock the lower triad by way of the upper triad, if we call the upper triad green, blue indigo. Love, wisdom and awareness of unity. Or awareness of, uh, godhead. Not only unity. So, so the scent in healing the sense of self is critical in, uh, to make right relationship or partnership or service to other, actually. So there are just two ways of talking about the same thing. We can talk about emotional healing, psychological well-being or releasing, you know, moving out of energy chakra blockages in the lower triad. It's the same thing.
Does the definition of, of blockage as non-acceptance of, of something that we're witnessing, is that?
Yes, actually, yes, that's actually a deep insight, I think. You know, let, let, I mean, hmm, I'm on the motorcycle in Thailand, angry at all the bad drivers who, uh, drive crazy or they don't, they seem to be asleep in their car. That's my problem. Why? Um, I can't accept emotionally, they are this way. And I can do nothing to stop it. And that's just the way it is, kid. But I don't like that. And in some way I don't want to accept it. And that's why the emotional process remains. I don't want to accept it. Because accepting is felt as a defeat. If I say I accept it, I've lost. There's some sense of I've lost. And so we have aversion or anger as a kind of false self-empowerment in the face of conditions that we can't accept and we wish were different and we don't want, don't want to admit that we actually cannot change it. I gave a talk on this called Green Ray and Powerlessness. Green ray and powerlessness. You think that green ray is happy dappy, love and light. Uh-uh. What's hard with love is to love pain, to love anger and grief and fear. How do you love it? Well, you don't like it. I mean, unless you're a masochist, maybe you can like it. But I don't really like hatred and grief and terror. So how do we, how do we make peace with that? How do we live the love one? With rage or hatred and grief and inconsolable sorrow. And like watching what's happening in the world to some people and fear and terror and panic and dread. I don't love them. I don't like them, but I could accept them. How? Ultimately, by not fighting it. And then going through the grieving cycle. The grieving cycle, like, uh, Elizabeth Kubler Ross said, the final stage is acceptance. So Ross starts with step five. Acceptance. And so in the end, we have to, uh, accept the, the sorrow of being in a world with a lot of pain and a lot of people hurting each other. Not that's not all that's happening here. But it's what's painful and difficult to accept that's most valuable to accept. If I give you a million dollars, you can accept it, no problem. If, if the house burns down, it's not easy to accept. So powerlessness. You want real green ray? Well, make peace with powerlessness. Oh. Now that doesn't mean I powerless, I'm, I have no power in the whole world. It means all sorts of things that we don't like, that we can't change, that we can at best accept. We're powerless to change. Okay? I can accept that. I mean, it's bad, it's bitter. But that, but that leads to spiritual maturity, ballast, gravity, gravitas, as far as I can tell. Somebody had a chat question of something, or there? Repeat the name of his writing on body parts and energy. So, oh. Good luck. Um, you have to go through the comments and reflections playlist. Just look at the titles. Um, my talks with a guy named Ken Bach, Be Okay? Be Okay? It was a series of seven, very practical. He's a really good guy. A Singaporean, Chinese, Hong Kong, something. Good guy. Also went to CIIS. We talked about many things, including, uh, Northern California psychedelics in the, uh, transpersonal psychology movement, which is interesting. So, so powerlessness, um, you know, is an advanced, um, level of green ray activation. It's, it's what, what where the challenge to love comes in is where we don't want to accept. What we don't want to accept because accepting indicates defeat, that it's the, it's over. We're not able to change it. And depending on the sense of self, that's easier or harder. When the second chakra is more unblocked, we can more fully allow and make peace with powerlessness, which just means I can't change it. It doesn't mean I have no power. It means in this place, in this situation, I have no power to make it better. That's a very mature thing to accept, I think. That doesn't mean in all situations. There are certain, many situations we should make change, of course. Like a dysfunctional relationship.
That's like the heart of the serenity prayer from the, uh, the twelve step program.
From, uh, yeah, that was, um, Neebor or somebody. Absolutely. Very, you know, God help me, uh, change the things I can or the peace to accept what I can't and the wisdom to know the difference. And that's green, blue indigo. Those are the, that's green, blue indigo. To, to, uh, the wisdom to accept, to know the differences, fifth chakra, the, the peace to accept is, is uh, six. And, uh, forgot what they own. So what is a three again? You can repeat.
Accept the things I cannot change. The serenity to accept things that you cannot change. The courage to do the things I can and the wisdom to know the difference.
Five, four, six, five.
Sorry, my cat's like having an asthma attack.
Okay. Cat has been triggered by the discussion. So, yeah, but that's, that's exactly right. Courage is very much of six chakra. And it's very much the people who have, you know, higher self is, uh, you know, power, abundant power. When we feel that, it's because of six-two chakra band. Because second chakra is open and activated or unblocked enough by green and blue. So that two and six, I did a whole talk on chakra bands. So the two and six are in communication because actually they're not seven chakras. There's only three. And even that is really one. There's only one that becomes a three that appears as a seven. So I did a whole talk on this also, cosmic numerics of one, three, seven, two. So that you can look at the chakras, the seven chakras as an open, a hinged, a kind of, um, open hinged. The center is blue. Uh, I'm sorry, is green. The green ray, the fourth chakra is the hinge between what became the upper and what became the lower. One, two, three became the lower and five, six, seven became the upper by the hinge of green ray. And that's called the law. The action of, action of free will upon love gives rise to light. And so light is a sevenfold, but the sevenfold came out of the three. And the hinge in the middle is green. And green is the way to unify, reunify so-called lower and higher. Or self and other, or self and God, or duality and unity, or matter and spirit. So the, the seven can be seen as a three. Or the seven can be folded back. And so then you have one, seven, two, six, and three, five as chakra bands. And so the higher expression of one is seven, two, six, three is five. That's also from the raw material. And, and very useful, actually. Because you can say that um, a healthy sense of self partakes of some activate, some contact with higher self. And the, the, the enlightened way of handling human relationships, third chakra horizontal is by the correlate to fifth chakra, three, five. Meaning bringing in love-based wisdom, not wisdom without love, love-based wisdom. That's the five-three chakra band. So it, it's very interesting, actually, to me.
Yeah. Um, all right. So we're, we're winding down, down our time. We have a request to do, um, to open it up for takeaways, people sharing takeaways. Would anybody want to share anything that you, uh, are feeling inspired from today or any takeaways, any nuggets?
You're welcome, Natalie. Thanks.
Take care.
Takeaways. I need to watch your videos.
Yeah, you, you'll find a lot of stuff that maybe, you know, refers to your questions or your, your perceptions, your observations.
Is, is your YouTube channel a good place to start or is there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Look at the YouTube channel, look at the, uh, about tab and you'll see many resources also. I have maybe half a dozen PDFs and, uh, two books or three books available. And, uh, over a thousand talks on the channel in about twenty-six playlists or so. So but, but the comments and reflections playlist is where you get all the interesting, you know, strange discussions.
Diana, did you want to say something?
Yeah, yeah. DJ?
Scott, did you want to finish what you were saying and then I'll share?
No, 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 no. It's okay.
I was just gonna share my takeaway. It's very raw. Scott, I've listened to you before, as I mentioned, and there's something about your delivery and the content that you share that like shows me my edges. Pushes my buttons. And I suspect it's not because we're going to be in disagreement. I, I do feel like there are things that I can learn that I have to learn from you and I really appreciate you showing up the way that you do very authentically. I think it models something really good for me and something that I resist. And so I think that my own kind of noticing my own reactions to the way that you're presenting actually gives me some excitement around maybe meeting with you or reading more of what you have to offer and seeing what I can learn from it. Um, so I'm just glad you came. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Yeah. Uh, I'm, from a young age, I sort of depended on myself, uh, quite significantly. I, I mean, I'm an only child. My father died when I was four. Uh, my mother had a hard time. And from age five, I basically felt that I could only depend on myself. And hmm, that was very clear, very tangible to me at that time even. So, um, you know, I want to be, I, I want to be true to myself. Whatever the self is, uh, lower and higher, relative, you know, relative and absolute. And, and you know, being true to myself or true to oneself is more important than being liked. And, um, I was aware from a very young age of distortions in the collective. And, um, you know, I don't, I really, you know, betraying myself is the greatest sin. Thank you, Sean. Uh, you know, being, being being hard hurting oneself is a real sin. And uh, I want to be authentic, you know? I think I, it's, I don't hurt anybody. But, um, I don't want to be compromised by how I, how others think I should be or me thinking I should be the way they want me to be, this kind of thing. So you know, the spiritual path is not, not, not takes a lot of, there's a lot of bitter, eat bitter. I did a talk on that too, eating bitter. It's a Chinese phrase. Means accept what you don't want to accept. So, anyway, it's nice to talk with you. And, uh, if you ever wanted to have counseling, send me an email or we'll talk something.
Thank you. Any final, um, takeaways? We're, we're a little bit past our time. I want to close here soon. Go ahead, Natalie. I super appreciated you articulating the importance of, um, flaming wandererhood. Yeah, that, that conversation came up for us early on and was kind of woven throughout. And, um, I think it's been really valuable for me to just be like, yeah, that's what's happening. That's what's up. And, um, I guess I, one question that's popped up for me a few times, hopefully with a quick answer for you is, do you have a sense of what density you're here from?
Oh, yeah, sure. I think I'm from sixth density and I think my first incarnation was during Egyptian times with the, with the crew, with the, uh, eighteenth dynasty crew. And, um, I think like, I mean, I think I may be from the wrong group or the same group. Uh, because the first time I read it, it just came right in. It was very well absorbed. There was no conflict and it felt, felt very familiar. Actually, it was like, I know this, I know this, I know this. It's just discovering that we know truth already. Now we're getting it flashed, but yeah, late sixth density.
Cool. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, Kent.
Yeah, I just want to say I thought it was all brilliant and thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you too.
You know, balancing love with wisdom and, uh, how to work with, uh, understanding negative wisdom in order to grow on our own wisdom and things like that. Everything was brilliant. And, uh, one new thing that you said that I wasn't aware of that I learned was about how there are really only three chakras, you know, like one representing body, another representing mind, like fourth and fifth representing mind and six and seventh representing spirit, you know?
Yes, yes.
That was, that was new valuable information to me. Thank you. So that's my takeaway.
Good. Well, and thank you, Aaron. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Aaron, for inviting me. I appreciate it. I enjoyed it also.
It's been a pleasure. It's like a family reunion. It's like a sixth density family reunion. Thank you, Scott, so much. Hopefully, maybe we can do it again in a season or so. We can, we can get something else together.
You tell me next time, whenever you want.
Great. Wonderful. All right. Thank you all. Enjoy your, rest of your day.
Okay, bye bye.
Bye bye.